But there's just so much stuff I find so humorous in these meetings. But a lot of that is because of how much. And I'm gonna be very frank on this, how much idiocy happens? And I sit there going, you got it.
No, that's ignorant.
And I, and I zip it and, but I still get that chuckle sometimes through. And that's, that's hard to not have in those videos sometimes.
And I, I didn't have the chuckle, I had the eye roll and the head shake.
Oh, and I still probably have that, you just don't get to see it on camera.
And welcome everyone, would you please? Join us and say in the pledge, Sean.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you, you have an agenda and I have no changes to the agenda. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I will state that at eight o'clock. We do have the budget hearing. So wherever we're at within the agenda. We will stop at that point. And, uh. Angie will get to present the budget to us, just so you know. Are there any recognitions?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry. Speaking of passwords. Um, I was able to visit the bookmobile, I hope if any of you get the chance, you can, it's very cool. Um, and there were kids and adults using it when I stopped in. And then I'd also like, like to recognize who, someone who happens to be here tonight, Carrie Manders was inducted as the state president of Delta Kappa Gamma, an organization that is a great friend to public education.
Congratulations. Any other recognitions? Thank you Dana. Visitor comments? Any visitors comments? Seeing none? We're up to the consent agenda.
Want to approve?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're up to old business, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four athletics and activities handbook. I have one question. On page fifty-one of the. The deal here, it talks about. Let me get to it.
You wanted the handbook or the?
Activities.
Activities book.
The pocket.
Yeah.
Athletics and activities handbook.
Oh, page three of the activities.
Page fifty-one on the computer. Which I know not everybody out there has that, but. Um. Where it talks about the penalties for controlled substances. The second paragraph. Can somebody explain to me what that says? Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll just read it.
Go ahead.
The penalty for student use of controlled substances results in the hearing being suspended from all activities or athletics and activities for a full calendar year, three hundred and sixty-five days upon expulsion by the Weston County School District number one school board. Upon completion of the expulsion terms, the student may return to athletics and activities under the following terms. The student's parents and guardians must accompany the student on an overnight school trip and bear the cost of lodging for the same accommodations as the team for all events remaining for the school calendar year. The student will not enter a room of any other student athletes unless called by, they're under the supervision of the coach or activities sponsor. Why would we, why would we, after the completion of the expulsion term, make the parents pay for the hotel rooms? Isn't that, I mean, after the expulsion and they're back in school, they're. The sentence has been completed at that point.
My understanding is it would be like a transitional period is what they're looking at with that. I wasn't part of that original conversation, but I'm, I'm assuming that's a, a transition back in. Is that correct ladies?
So, you want the back in the first?
No, well, just explain it to us.
You'll be good.
Okay. So the intent of it was that there was a situation where there was a school trip, some kids made some bad choices, it put the sponsor in a really uncomfortable poor situation where I don't. We discussed, we didn't feel like school employees should be responsible for the actions of those kids outside of the school building. So. We were kind of following the lead of a couple of the other towns that they were, their kids were involved in the same thing. And I said, what did you guys do? Like? Our, our coaches, our sponsors are going on these trips overnight. And we're responsible for these kids. Like, how do you? I don't think it's fair for the adults to be responsible in that way. And she said, well, the kids could return to school. So the infraction happened in June. Their kids got whatever their expulsion policy was, I don't know how long they were out of whatever the activity was, but for a full calendar, for the next full school year, their parents had to travel with them.
But that's not what this is saying. What this is saying, after the completion of the expulsion, then the parents have to take care of them again, still. I'd, I guess I'm, or that's the way I'm reading it, let me put it that way.
I think our intention was for when they returned to activities during the, like, we didn't want them to have to be completely expelled and not be able to travel. But we didn't feel like it was the coach's responsibility to be in charge of them with other students when they had made those poor decisions. So if their parents wanted them to travel, then they could travel, they just had to come with them.
So this really has nothing to do with an expulsion?
No, I don't know how we worded it in conjunction with the expulsion. I'm not sure about that. Yeah, this might be worded a little thinky, I don't know.
Yeah, I see that. Okay, Dana?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So. Let me see if I can give an example here that will clear it up for us. Let's say that we have students who are under expulsion terms. And if they meet all the requirements for that expulsion and we end it December thirty-first, so the expulsion is over. They've paid their penalty. What you guys, what this says to me is they still will have to have their parents go with them. And my biggest concern with that is, and I think this was completely unintentional, but this gives kids whose parents have flexible jobs and more money, more opportunities to participate and and I don't care for that at all. So, but I, I do understand that there could be concerns with teachers, but in advisors. But you still have, you're having to watch all the kids for that. When you're on a trip, right?
I think the situation was being out of town, then what do you do with those young people who can't be in the, in the hotel room by themselves because they've proven they can't? And you're the only supervisor there, are you responsible for them then in your room? Like, what do you, what is the?
But that's not, that's, this is for, for controlled substances, substances. Uh, and an expulsion is what this is. You're, you're, we're talking about two different things. You're talking about a disciplinary action on a student that that has done something, but they're not expelled really, uh, but they need to be supervised by the parents during this trip. Which is completely different than being expelled, because if they're expelled, they can't participate in activities for a full year, according to this.
That's great. So did you find a place where that's better fit? I think that's what we were also struggling with is, do you make a whole new? A whole new, um. Section?
Well, I don't. I don't know, I just didn't understand it, that's, I mean.
Well, then the way you pointed out, John, I think you're right, I think it reads wrong, it's in the wrong spot.
You know, I'll.
So what you ladies are saying, like if some kid threw something out a window, going down, down the road, he got in trouble, but he's not, and he gets in trouble, comes back. Um, and you know he's a troublemaker, so you guys want the parents to take him from there on the next trip, is that what you guys are kind of saying? For the troubled kids that aren't doing drugs and, and stuff like that?
I think we were trying to relate this to, like, they did something illegal, like it was against the law. More than once. So obviously, and it's happened quite a bit. Right? Like with the vaping and stuff. And so our first offense is what? They get caught and what happens? Well, it's all illegal substances for these kids. Right?
I think the way the book has it.
Think the way the book has it, there's different penalties, one, two, and three for tobacco and alcohol. And then the controlled substance is a one, kind of a one-shot deal. So yeah, so I think it's two different, like, two different things where.
Right. So this is the controlled substance or the? We have.
And I, and I would also say that when these kids go on a students go on a trip, um, the sponsor or the coach or whatever, uh, has the right to discipline the kid or have the parents come get them. And, and they're still responsible to the school because they're on a school-sponsored activity. And so if they, if they do something during that activity, say they smoke a cigarette and they get caught, well, they can still get suspended from school from that. I mean, they, just because they're on the activity doesn't give them that freedom or that right to do that. I mean, if you're looking at controlled substance, substances out in the public and they get caught by the police officer.
That's not what we're talking about.
But that could, that has applied to things that's happened at school. And so it does apply to this policy if we know about it, if we don't know about it. You know, that's, that's a different thing. But. I just, I just think the wording's wrong, I really do.
I do, I agree with that, but I mean, what we're trying to go for is something happens, whether it be like at State Track in May, the school year ends at the end of May. Like.
There's so many.
Yeah, and so we were looking to, and they don't care, like, because there are no real consequences for them. So we were trying to help the coaches and help like.
So if they end the track in May and they get in trouble there. Um. I guess they have cross-country in the fall.
That's the biggest.
Your biggest fear with soccer or track that actually have a culminating event after a lot of graduation dates is truly that, if I'm a senior, what are you gonna do? I walked across the stage, I have my diploma, so in that case, truly, you either call the parent or you have to call law enforcement and it becomes a non-school issue. Because they're seniors and they've walked across the stage.
Billy?
Um, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but on this also, I think, um, in the previous handbook. It was just for the twenty, like twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And that's when we talked about if something happens in May, these kids weren't gonna get punished the following year because the handbook, so that's why I think we went to the three sixty-five, right?
Yes.
I, I think is why, so I mean. That, that takes play into that too, I mean, if something happens to them in the track season, they can be punished the next following season.
That's your signal.
I, I believe that's true, and, and I can tell you, thirty years ago, the reason we walked away from three sixty-five is, as a juvenile, you are only going to punish those that are honest. Because if I get caught in Wheatland, which I have had happen to me. They don't release that information to you because they're juveniles. So you call the kids in and the honest one gets punished and the others walk away because you don't have privy to that information out of season. So, I mean, I'm not, I mean, this is repeating history, that's fine. Um, but I think the, the real thing that we would probably need to look at through Allison Gee is I, my understanding legally is, once the expulsion has been served or the suspension, two different things. Then, then that punishment ends. You, you can't try to continue on, um, any more than what the law will allow the board to do. Um, and I, I mean, I get your concern, but truly, if, if I'm coming off of an expulsion, I've served um, whatever that contract was and, and that's a, that's a done deal. And I'm not an attorney, but I could ask Allison that.
I would say so too, I mean, once you've served your punishment or your sentence or whatever you want to call it. Once that's done, you shouldn't continue to be.
So let's say that there are sophomores. And you're at football in Level. And one of them gets caught smoking pot. They're expelled for a year from everything. They come back after that year and they passed all the drug tests. And they're back in football and according to this, if they want to go to Level that year, their parents go with them.
Seeing, I think that's wrong.
And you think it's wrong.
Because they've served their, I mean, they're out of activities and sports for a year. Uh, they've already served the three hundred and sixty-five days from the expulsion. You know, it might be a little different if, yeah, they've already served it and if they, they do everything they're supposed to be doing during that expulsion. Why continue it on? I mean, that's, yeah. I don't think we want to do that. Yes, Dana?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think uh, one of the things we can do is, is make it more risky for kids. And one of those is drug testing for activities and athletics. Um, we have um, the last, the twenty-two risk assessment, uh, survey. Um, thirty-two percent of our tenth to twelfth graders say it's very easy to get vape. Uh, forty percent of them have ever vaped. Uh, fifteen percent have used marijuana in the past thirty days. Fifty percent of tenth to twelfth graders say it's very easy, easy. Or possibly, uh, a little harder to get marijuana. So we actually have, uh, fewer kids drinking than we have vaping and using marijuana now. Um, I think, uh, maybe po- uh, possibly working with law enforcement now that there's a drug dog in town and letting kids know that drug dog is gonna walk through the parking lot and the school at random. Every every week to every eight weeks. You know, there'll be surprise watchers. I think making it riskier for them uh, is, is the kind of message we want to send, so. That would be one of, a couple of my suggestions.
But that still doesn't clear up this, this handbook.
So.
And I understand that and I agree with you about that, but.
Can I just ask, um, because I don't have the full handbook in front of me. That chunk of information, I think we all agree, is in the wrong spot, like you've been expelled. You did your three sixty-five days, you've been good, move on, right? But if a student is on overnight trips that has, I mean, so you're in Level or something, is there a place in our handbook, and I should know this, um, that says the parents will bear the cost to fly them home? Or the parents will bear the costs for?
We were leaving three kids on the corner of Little America who drove the camera, waved and moved along.
So maybe we just take that piece out if that is already there. And we're not going to do that for like future, like we're not going to have the parents bear the cost for future times, but yes, you will pay to fly your kid home or you will pay to whatever. Maybe we just take that chunk out.
Billy?
So I don't know if you have the next paragraph under the second offense, but it says if a student damages private property um, or hosts school property while attending an athletic or activity as the representative Weston County School District One, he or she will bear the cost of all damages and may be picked up or sent home at the expense of the parent guardian. So maybe if you put in there not only damaged property, but you know, if they caused trouble or you're something, instead of just, because that's just says causing damage.
So maybe an additional, uh.
Yeah, just add that under that, damage to private.
Controlled substances or something.
Got a question. On this vaping, where does it fall under? Does it fall under tobacco and alcohol? Is that where it falls under?
Unless it's marijuana.
But how do you know?
So, yeah, so truly, the, I think the, the crazy thing about vaping is, is you almost have to have an expert to tell you exactly what was in the cartridge and many times that cartridge either number one has to go through a test or there's like kind of cartridges that they've identified as THC, um, but they're a little bit of anything you want them to be, so they could fall under uh, a tobacco and nicotine kind of a product, or they could actually fall under anything else, um, whatever can be manufactured by man. Um, then that would be, you know, and I think the biggest problem always has been the confusion between a suspension and an expulsion, you know, an expulsion can only happen if it happens through this body. Um, kids can be suspended for all kinds of different things. Um, but I think in the coach's handbook, I think my parent handbook is where I would want that information at any time. My child is being appealed, um, I should get the call, I should be responsible to go get them. If not, um, and you're right, I mean, economics could play into this. Um, maybe we send somebody from transportation or law enforcement to make sure they make it home safe, but I don't think we're asking anyone to babysit. Um, but I don't think we're there to make other kids' lives harmful, because I do remember the state football trip. Um, and that was a miserable event. Um. And so.
Drive to get your kid.
Yeah, a long ways to go get your kids off the sideline.
I got one more. I got one more. Okay ladies, I understand what you guys are trying to do, I really do. So, like, the first offense with tobacco and alcohol, it looks like they get three weeks off. Okay, so maybe after the three weeks, we put them on a probation deal where mom and dad takes care of them the next two weeks or something like that, where mom and dad pays all the cost. Um, and, and I understand, let's say the ADs and the coaches all come together and say, okay, this kid's causing us a lot of problems. I, I say the ADs and the coaches need to get with the parents and say, okay. Um, it, the kid's causing us a lot of problems from here on out. Maybe you guys can take him to activities, I don't know how it all works, but I understand what you guys are trying to do. I, I really do, because there are some stinkers out there. But, and, and I think you guys are going the right way. We just gotta figure out how to put it, the handbook, like he said, the parent's handbook, coach's handbook, put it in that. Because there are coaches that do put up the lot. And I understand that some of the sponsors put up with the lot too. And I guess that's a decision they have to make at that time. Mom and dad, come and get this kid, if he's gonna stay any longer, you get in my room and, and you pay for all the costs from here on out because the school district's not paying, something like that.
And we could do that in that next section, I think.
Okay.
Word it better.
So would you want to take it back and bring it to the next meeting? I think it's getting pretty close, yeah, okay.
As I say, we have to get.
Jason, excuse me.
And I'm not disagreeing, but I guess legally, what is the school's responsibility for a student up to a certain point? Versus, like we were saying, well, the school's done with you, your parents can come all the way to Colorado to get you.
No.
We're still responsible for that, so.
And yeah.
We can't make the parents come get them then.
Well, you, you can request, but you're, you're still in local parentis until you turn it over to the parent. Um, the idea of just leaving somebody in Denver or Little America unsupervised, I think would be sheer negligence. Um, but most of the time, you would, you know, you would make those arrangements. Um, they will come and pick up the child and if not, we can make transportation agreements to get them back home safe.
And then I think the second part, Sean, um, you know, kind of like John was saying too, I mean, once the three weeks done, they served their time, they served their punishment that we set forth, so maybe what we need to do is either within that three weeks or extend that three weeks to include your parents will do this for the following two weeks, for a total of five weeks, just for an example. And then, you know what I'm saying? I, I don't know if that would answer kind of that question, John, as far as.
I think you need to make the parents involved, and this is just me, okay? Just with kids, that, okay, you're right, they did their three weeks' time. I think they need to go on a probation period where, okay, parents, for the next two competitions, you guys are gonna be there with this kid for a probation period, because I know how this works. Some kids are really good, some kids aren't. So, I mean. I don't know, it's, um, I think a probation deal where parents need to be more involved too, that's how I feel, so. Dana?
We could also say if you have finished your, uh, your three weeks and you reoffend again during that season, you're done.
It's.
For a full calendar year.
Under second? Okay, then. Then you wouldn't be sending them after the three weeks. And the other thing is, um. I went to a school that had an event after the end of the year. And you got your diploma after you were done with all of your school district activities. The kids who had to go to something and represent their school after school was out, after seniors were done. They got their diploma after that. They got a nice little. They got their diploma after that. They got a nice little copy of it in their folder. But.
If you could make that happen, that F B L A advisor would really appreciate it.
Because that, um, we can, we can put that in there.
You could, but let me be the devil's advocate though, because F B L A and sometimes national speech. Go into the end of July, correct?
Than last week of June.
So for F B L A, what's what's national speech? Cuz I had a young man give a farewell speech there that wasn't real good either, and and there wasn't anything we could do. Um, but that would be a good question for Allison, because at one time, legal counsel told us that we could not hold property. Um, but I do know it is, it's an issue. But yeah, you would be waiting quite a while. And I don't know how important a diploma is. In all of your registrations, as far as, is that part of the packet for all college? Tech school admission, or is it not? That's the other question, I don't know. You have to send a transcript? So you would, in the transcript, you would say that the student was completed on this date, but you don't turn the diploma over till completion? That would have to be, that's, that's gotta be an Allison question.
Okay, if you would take this back.
We will take it back and try again.
Okay.
Third time's a charm.
Yes, thank you for your effort. There. It's been asked for an executive session under Wyoming State. Our Wyoming statute sixteen four dash four oh five dash X to discuss personnel. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a second? Been moved and seconded to go into executive session? Opposed? Motion carried.
Is it okay if I sit?
Everybody on? Okay, sorry about that, Bo.
Mr. Chairman, can I stay in my seat? Is that all right?
As long as you have a mic, we don't care.
I do. So you have the budget presentation for the uh twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. It's been very challenging. There is a lot of issues going on. Um. That anticipated uh or proposed revenue budget, um, we're looking at. With the locals, county and state revenues, uh fifteen million nine hundred thousand four hundred and nineteen. Except, you'll notice I have a note at the bottom. The W D E has not finalized the funding model yet. There has been a broken formula. And it's causing a lot of issues. So until it is um released and certified. We don't have a final number. That it's correct. So I went with the lowest number. I I figured that was the best way to go. You'll also find we have a a carryover for the general fund. Of two million four hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. That is because. This last year, we received eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars more than we were supposed to from the foundation guarantee payment. So we, this is what we have, but that we do need to remind that we're not gonna get that this year.
Do you have another copy of this? So Stan can have a copy.
I don't, he's trying to me know.
Okay, go ahead.
So that's where we're at with the the revenue. It's it's up in there. Hopefully by the end of the month, they'll have it fixed. It's been interesting. Um, and then I, I know that, and I know this is different than what you guys have seen in the past with the pie charts and stuff. I was trying to figure out where to get the numbers from, and I did it this way with our revenue and our expenditures. I figured it had the same effect. Uh, these are the fund carryovers for the different funds. Um. They may not be final because we, there may be something that still has to come out of last year. I I. I'm not sure, so we're just, that's why they say not, may not be final. So the major maintenance was at one million ninety-one thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. Our lunch fund had a balance of a hundred and seven, five hundred and thirty-five. The rec fund had eighty-six thousand four hundred and three dollars. Capital construction was two thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The special revenue had thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. And the bothies at the agency fund had twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars at the end of June, as of June thirtieth. Our proposed expenditures for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Um, I broke it down, um. With the numbers, the total budget would be sixteen million one hundred and fifty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. It's broke down by the the sta- the certified staff, the six thousand one hundred eighty-seven, one hundred eighty-two dollars. Administrators, eight hundred eighty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. The directors, five hundred eighty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. Counselors, one hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-eight. Professional staff, two hundred and twenty-six thousand three twenty-three. Support staff. Is two billion three hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. And the other, which is like your supplies, um. Dues, fees, all the other expenditures we have in the budget would be three million three hundred thirty-eight dollars. Thirty-eight thousand and four hundred ninety-nine dollars. And then I put the last year's approved budget was fifteen million seven hundred and seventeen thousand two forty. And expenses at the end of the year were thirteen million two hundred eighty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine. Uh, this is a slide, uh, was a slide of the um budget that I put in the paper for the budget adoption. Um, for the different funds, the general fund. Do you want me to read everything? Okay. Okay, so that's what that is, and then.
There's a question on any of it, I guess. No, go ahead.
And the last slide, um, just shows the the mills. We get the twenty-five district wide mills. As required by sta- statute, the six county wide mills as required by statute, and the one district wide. Mill to, for the B O C, or the recreation district. And a half for the district wide mill to support the B O Cs. That's how I have for budget.
Jason?
Turn to the last page.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Is there any questions from the? Community? I guess, uh. We have a motion to approve the budget.
To approve the budget for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the budget uh for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Uh. And I guess with any changes that might come after the funding model has been. Corrected by the state or whatever. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And please note, there was no public comment. And thank you, Angie, for your hard work and dedication.
You made it through. Thank you.
Would you like to excuse yourself now for chocolate? This is a great stress reliever.
We'll move, move on to new business. Uh, classified recommendation.
I would recommend to the board, um, the approval of Gary Smithers uh for the maintenance position.
Move to approve. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve Gary Smithers for the maintenance position during discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Revised policy J I C H alcohol, tobacco products and drugs?
Yes, and I would recommend uh to the board the approval of those revisions.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a second? Been moved and seconded to approve. Uh, the revision to policy J I C H alcohol, tobacco products and drugs? Is there any questions? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it seems to me like this would be the perfect policy in which to add vaping and. Vaping products. Cuz we don't spell that out that I could find. Is it under definitions? Okay, oh, just general policy definitions? Or, wait, let me, I scrolled too far.
And it might be the policy that rules about this.
Okay.
That it has the definitions of what.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other questions, concerns?
I'm not showing that page number.
Um, so in the, in the policy packet, J I C H, page five. It's the second article under tobacco, tobacco products, and then it goes on to talk about electronic cigarettes. And other devices um used to inhale or vape unless, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So any other questions?
I do have a follow-up question then. So it seems to me, maybe for clarity, should we just. Have alcohol, tobacco products, drugs, vaping? As part of the title? Because there are people who think we aren't addressing the vaping issue.
Okay.
I think that's, I think that's.
But it falls under those.
Okay.
Yeah, or vaping can, yeah, I mean, I think how you label that is up to you guys. Um, the the language in the policy is straight from the School Boards Association. But if you wanna add vaping, it could say alcohol, tobacco, dash, um. Vaping. Dash drugs.
Cuz, cuz when, when you're looking for a policy, if it's in the title, it's way easier to find. Cuz they are kind of hard to navigate.
Whatever the board's wishes are.
Is that okay with the motion maker? And the second?
Thank you.
Any other? Questions or concerns? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Revision to policy G D B E, sports staff vacations and holidays.
And I would um recommend to the board the uh approval of those revisions.
And that's basically Juneteenth and. That's it, right?
Need to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to. Uh, approve the revision to policy G D B E, support staff and vacations and holidays. Any concerns, questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. W H S A A enrollment dues and catastrophic catastrophic insurance?
I would recommend um those amounts that are in your packet. The only side note that I have is I need to call um the director and find out. Um, if they were moving Special Olympics under the High School Activities Association. Why it's not reflected in their dues or fees. Um, but I would recommend that as it stands this evening.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the. W H S A A enrollment dues catastrophic insurance. Say, questions, concerns? Comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Bid recommendation for the. Window safety shield.
Yeah, so this, this proposal actually came out of the crisis team. Um, and so I do recommend uh to you the safety shield for the. Uh, window door entrances in the district for the amount of thirty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars. But also would let the board know that currently, the the product is not available. Um, so we will, if you approve this, we will have it installed when they are ready. Um, as far as, you know, the manufacturer is ready to to be able to produce their end of the product.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Been moved and seconded to. Uh, approve the bid recommendation for the window safety shield film from M G T Films. Uh. Is there any discussion? Yes, Jason?
So Brad, in nine months when they, it's available and the cost of materials have gone up threefold. Are we locked into this?
Yep. He said that the the amount won't change, and he he just didn't think he could get it done by the start of the school year. Which was sort of the requirement that we had in place, but realistically, he was thinking more by the first part of October.
Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Bid recommendation for the high school carpet?
Yes, I would recommend to you interior images um for the carpet replacement at the high school. For the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
For second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the bid proposal for the high school carpet from interior images. Uh, for two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four elementary school handbook.
Yep, and I would recommend uh approval of that handbook, which is in your packet.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four elementary school handbook. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four draft special education handbook.
Yes, and the reason it is a draft is this is um. One of the items that came out of the exit interviews along with several different conversations last spring. Um, and the reason it's a draft is we want to be able to provide. Staff to look it over and provide other best practices, so it's it's uh different than just a. One-year kind of a handbook, um, it's more of a living document. So I do recommend to the board the draft proposal of the special education handbook for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four draft special education handbook? Yes.
So i- is there like a timeline for approving this? Approving a draft seems. I mean, it's one thing to let us see the draft, but we don't normally approve drafts of handbooks. Or is that a requirement?
Well, this, this is really sort of a different, cuz it's a K twelve kind of a thing. A lot of it is rules, regs and best practices. Some of the staff will tell you that it's very. Demeaning, that they don't need that. They've spent four years in college. They understand best practices, da, da, da. However, it was a request from others during those meetings. So the reason that it is, is more of a living document than a handbook is, is a. is, is a lot of it are things that you just simply don't have any choice in. It's federal law. Um, and then the others are more not policy, but, but best practices. And truly, there is difference between elementary sped and high school sped. And so I think that's sort of where some of the rift was is how dare, how dare you tell me how to teach my kids when all you've taught is in the elementary and high school is different. So it is a different document that way. And, and I hope that when the staff sees it and they find something that may pertain to their area that helps others more that they share it, and then we can add that. So it, it's, it's different than a, the middle school, high school, elementary handbooks, athletic handbooks where they sign off. This is really a, a guide for staff.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award winning website, news L J dot com and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to news L J dot com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
We're down to reports. Angie, you want to give another one tonight? Bo, do you have anything? Did you want to wait for your?
Yeah.
Okay, Brad?
So I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to make this report short. And just so you know, um, I do want to take the time to, to thank everybody in the district office that has helped during this um budget time, summer. Summer is a downtime for a lot of people. But for those that are here with me, um, it's sort of your busy time. So one of the things that I just wanted to update the board on is we did um back in July eighth, um, we received the subpoena for the release of uh information for W D E. Um, and I know that many of you saw this and can read it, but just so you know, um, the dates have been changed. For example, um, the vacant position list that was supposed to be due August thirtieth is now been extended till September fifteenth. So everyone really gets to figure out what the true vacancies are for the upcoming school year. I still think this, the item B, which was the reserve fund information, uh, you just heard that in a public meeting. That is something that's reported. Um, so I think that one's fairly easy. The question at hand does deal with the school lunch fund, which is, is item C. When I first read it, I thought they were only looking for debt that was incurred by students and parents that hadn't paid for meals. But what the real um question that they have there is, is how much general fund money is allocated in the grant or the general fund, and then how much we actually overspend from that. So um, working on that, and again Denise will help me with that. Um, we will send a copy of our last climate survey, which was E. And D, the teacher evaluation piece is still sort of up for question, but just so you know, on ours, on our teacher evaluation, there isn't an assumptive score given to the teacher at the end of the evaluation. What it is, is it's a rubric that is used over different areas of effective teaching. And then you apply that rubric to there. So what I'm telling you is in, in a small sample group like our, our middle school. Um, so one is low, four is high. Most of your scores are going to be around that three mark, which is where you want your staff to be. And, and in just the short term, it varies from like two point eight to one point two. Um, and that's your variance. That's just it is. So the larger your sample group gets, it's going to be a different number. I'm not exactly sure what the intent of the usage of this in the lawsuit is. But I do know that it is something that is being negotiated right now or has been negotiated as that we would fill out a, a form six sixty, which is I'm sure another state report. Um, but anyway, um, it's work in progress. Uh, the deadlines have been extended, but we'll make sure that when we release that information that you have a copy of that as well. So if you're asked on the street or by a legislator, that's, that's, that's what it's about. How about any other questions for me? Before I go, I wanted to thank, thank you for allowing me to, to attend my baby's um uh wedding. And then I wanted to take time to recognize Brandy for eagerly stepping in and and, and doing my job. And I use the word eagerly loosely in case she's online.
Any questions for Brad? Thank you, Brad. Are there any board reports? Yes, Dana.
Um, the, the great news I couldn't tell you last time is that uh WEPT has been able to um institute a new employee assistance program. It provides and letters were going out to all, all members. Everyone who's a member of a group should have gotten a letter at home, I believe. Um, it, it includes a number of free hours of counseling, including financial counseling for all members. There is training and counseling also for staff when there's a serious school event of which we know can happen. And um, there's a bunch of other stuff. They just changed the password on the portal of WEPT. And so I can't pull it up and read it to you and they haven't shared that with us yet, but there's um a lot of really interesting benefits and I hope people will take advantage of it. The really great thing is uh, the WEPT board was able to get Blue Cross Blue Shield to help us negotiate, because they offer that in some of their plans to negotiate with this company. So uh, we got the cost down low enough that there is going to be no charge to any member groups. So it's a, it's a really great new benefit. Like you can get six hours of counseling per member of your family. That's, that's worth a lot, just that one thing. Um, and if anybody wants investment counseling and, and all that, they can get a little bit of that there too. So there's also a free, um, I can't remember if it's an hour, half hour with an attorney. Um, just a lot of things that people should find helpful. So that was awesome.
Thank you, Dana. Yes.
The um, Eastern Wyoming BOCSs met and they approved their new budget. And last time there was some discussion on the M O U. They took it to legal counsel and they decided to leave it alone and they felt it was within the guidelines that was required. They did however, want all the schools to check policy to see if it reflects that when a student from the homeschool situation they were concerned. As long as our policy shows that a homeschooler is covered as a student under our stuff, we should be okay. And that was it.
Okay.
So they really didn't answer.
No.
Um, so here, let me correct me if I'm wrong. So the question comes up when we're talking about concurrent and dual credit. And so what what the real question is, is since the school district does not receive A D M and they're not on our rolls, who pays for the student that takes the dual credit? Concurrent, we already pay for the teacher. However, you could take it into the, you could say both. So we were thinking that the answer had to be through E W C, since it was them delivering the program. So what I just heard was nice try. Um, but then really what we probably should do is ask the question to Allison. If if you were to exclude a group under dual, is that legal or not? Since they didn't answer that.
He didn't answer it. Legal counsel.
So then I'm going to say, then they probably will, then the answer might be already in front of us. Then, then it's probably illegal to just to exclude anybody. Or they would have put it in, in theirs. Right?
Didn't really clarify that. I'll ask questions.
I will ask Allison.
Thank you, Dana. Any other board reports? Yes, Jason?
Yeah, we'll uh in the BOCSs, we'll be uh doing our budget tomorrow. Um, other than that, nothing, nothing new for this.
Okay, thank you, Jason. The only report I have is I had the opportunity to, to visit England here. And my daughter walked me right into a riot. Uh, teachers were protesting their wages. So it was just kind of ironic, you know? It's, yeah. And then I also discussed a quite at length with a retired school teacher over there, been teaching for thirty years. The last five years, she taught really uh disadvantaged, disturbed children. And she said she taught four a year. One of them, which surprised me, and I'm not trying to be political here, but one of them, when she finally got the young man to speak to her and, and talk, she was actually a science teacher, found out that he was intrigued with everything that Trump did. He studies Trump. And I, I just found that to be kind of odd coming from England, a foreign country, following the politics in the United States. So that's my report anyway, as far as education is concerned. We'll move on to future agenda items. Um, there's a rec, request for early start on August ninth for says superintendent's evaluation. We usually start at five o'clock, if I remember right. Is that correct, Selah? Yes, Dana?
Wait, did we not do this last spring?
We do, we do one every, every six months.
Every six months, okay. Okay. Thank you.
But if you'd like to go to once a year, that would be fine.
Could I have a motion to have an early start?
I'll make a motion. Five o'clock?
Five o'clock.
I'll make a motion for five o'clock for early start.
Second.
It's been early, uh, been moved and seconded to have an executive session at five o'clock on August ninth to do the superintendent's evaluation. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Is there anything else for future agenda items?
Oh, we'll have the third reading on that.
Right.
One more.
Okay. We'll move on to discussion items. The W S B A regional meetings. Ours is scheduled for August thirtieth.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since there are five Wednesdays in August, couldn't we change our meeting to the twenty third so more people could go to W S B A?
Fine with me. Anybody opposed to that? We could, we could have time to think about it and, and check our schedules and everything and, and we can bring it up August night. So that's a future agenda item. I do know that I, I was called by Curtis Rankin, who's our director for the W S B A and asked me about the N S B A and the
C O. C O O.
Yeah, something. And, and which I preferred, and I told him I didn't follow him close enough to be able to have an intelligent conversation about it at this point in time. So um and that's basically what he told me too. So I guess if you do have some concerns about us Wyoming being part of the N S B A or, or the other one.
Sent a letter out.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there's an email from yesterday that we have, W S B A has
I haven't read it, Dana, I'm sorry.
Can, voted to continue membership with COSBA.
Okay.
And not to continue membership with the N S B A.
I have not. I received it, I haven't read it.
I talked to him about that recently too.
Okay.
Well, pulling out this year, they're going to be
They do it every year.
Do you need a motion to move meeting?
If, if you want to do it tonight, or we can do it August ninth, I don't care. Whatever. If you want one, that's fine. Okay, let's do it August ninth. Seeing nothing else on our agenda, meeting adjourned.
What are the West County Rec Board agenda? Approval of the agenda?
Second.
I got a motion for properly seconded to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Any recognitions? Go ahead.
First time I ask your help on this one, but the stingrays competed at the state tournament. You want to kind of?
I didn't go because my son who qualified had a double ear infection, so he didn't get to participate. But yeah, um, the stingrays in division three, because we are a rather small, we got um a state champ for our stingrays group number one in that division for our swimmers. And we had a lot of first top eight and they did really, really well. So, yeah.
Perfect. Any other recognitions? Okay, seeing none. Uh, visitors' comments, special reports. Seeing none, moving on. Consent agenda, consent, or sorry, yeah, action items, consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I got a motion on the floor, properly seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Those opposed, same sign? I just need to quit touching it. Old business. Teresa, do you have anything for old business?
No, I do not.
Okay. Anything for new business?
No, I just gave you guys a kind of a recap purported of what's happened. Because last time we had a meeting, we talked about just what we've been doing as a record, so I put something together, hopefully, if you have any questions about that.
Is that something that we kind of wanted to like advertise on the website? Wasn't it to kind of list is what the direct board does type thing?
Yeah.
So, okay.
I just thought I'd let you guys look at it first, and then I can put it up there.
Perfect, thank you. I don't have anything for any other information other than that, Teresa? Anything for discussion items? Nope, go ahead.
A couple of individuals who live in Western, Western County suggested that are identifying ourselves too often as the Western County Recreation Board, when we are in fact the Eastern, Western County Recreation Board. I know you had us on your just reported to Northwest Western County, but I think we're actually on the mill levy where the Eastern, Western County Rec Board might be more conservative people. So just a friendly pass along.
So do we need to change our heading on our to reflect that then? Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Silo, if you'll do that. Hey. Anything else? Seeing none?
I don't know if you guys see.